Well, good.
Well, a meeting to order at 6:33. A roll call, Peg.
Councilman Parmley.
Present.
Councilman McCormick. Councilman Grandy. Councilwoman Yor.
Present.
Councilman Yusak.
Present.
Council Vice President D'Agostino.
Present.
And Council President Collins.
Present. Item four, possible motion to convene into closed executive session. Item may the town council make to convene into executive session to discuss take possible action and or vote pursuant to the relevant requirements of Rhode Island general laws 4246-5A subsection one. A discussion of the job performance, character, or physical or mental health of an employee, provided that such person affected shall have been notified and advanced in writing and advised that the employee may require that the discussion be held in open meeting. Discussion and or potential action, announcement and or votes from executive session and or open session concerning the affected employee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made second. Discussion on it? Or is bottom of discussion? The employee's been notified?
Yes. We'll read it.
Seven oh eight. We'll call peg.
Councilman McCormick, Councilman Grandy, Councilman Parmerly, Councilwoman Yor, Councilman Usah, Council Vice President Diagastino, and Council President Collins.
We had an executive session, we had a motion to close the executive session, we had a motion to seal the minutes. I'm not, and a motion was made, but I'm gonna not announce the particulars of it because it isn't fully resolved yet. Once the matter is addressed, we will. With that, item four, public hearing. Could I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We'll call peg.
Councilman McCormick, Councilman Grandy, Councilman Parmerly, Councilwoman Yor, Council Vice President Diagastino, and Council President Collins.
Hi. His licensing board regarding a Class A retailer, JTD Inc., DBA General Country Store slash Country Liquor Store and Nicholas Izzy, where premises located at 10 Hope Furnace Road, Hope, Rhode Island, JTD, to hold a hearing to consider and determine whether JTD abandoned the license pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws three five sixteen point one, and the Department of Business Regulation Decision and Order, Ray, motion for stay, DVR number two five LQ zero zero one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion on it? All people.
Hi.
Right. Okay, any against? Nope. Okay. What?
Let's first identify the party that's here.
Nicholas Heeman for the licensee.
Nicholas, Nicholas Heeman for the licensee.
Timothy Kane and Robert Craven for Chopmest Hill Liquors LLC.
I'm going to object to the idea that Chopmest Hill Liquors is a party to this hearing. They have no standing in this hearing. This is essentially a show cause hearing in which the town is seeking to prove that my client's license has been abandoned, or that he ceased operation under the statute. So it's not the type of hearing where it's notice to the abutters. They have no right to participate in this hearing. It only corrupts the record. It only prolongs what doesn't need to be prolonged. So I object to their participation, and I object to the idea that they're identified as a party to this. They have nothing. They have no license right now. The whole process has been stayed, and it was remanded back to you to either conduct a renewal hearing, or an abandonment hearing, and you're conducting an abandonment hearing. So their participation shouldn't be allowed. It's not required under the statute. It's not called for in the process, and they are not parties to the case because they don't hold, they don't hold this particular license.
What?
Well, this matter is on for a show cause abandonment hearing. However, the matter is a remand from the DVR proceedings. Those proceedings instructed us to address that issue before further proceedings continue at the DVR level. The Chopmest Hill Liquor is a party to that case. They were admitted to a party from which this remand stemmed. So it'd be my position that you can hear from them. We could acknowledge Mr. Hammond's objection, of course, but I don't see the harm in hearing from them. I think this is largely a factual inquiry, and based on the prior proceedings regarding JTD and Mr. Izzy, I think most of the facts are not, not, most of the relevant facts are not, not in dispute. And I don't know if Mr. Kane wants to be heard on that issue.
Actually, before Tim says anything, so this is largely a statement of fact type of environment. I would think that, you know, the Kitson's attorneys would be able to, you know, step up and say if something is, they deem incorrect, but that should be focused on facts. And that should, their testimony would be limited to ensuring that everything is stated correctly in their opinion, I would think.
Correct. And again, it's a factual inquiry, which then the council, based on those, the factual findings, would have to make a determination whether, under the statute, the license was abandoned, and therefore the council, you know, based on all of that, whether the council revokes the license or not.
But they would not necessarily have input on that. That's amongst the council, Mr. Izzy.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. We are a part, my client is a party in interest. We do have a license subject to a stay. So we don't, Mr. Heeman said, we don't have anything. We have an issued license subject to a stay by the Department of Business Regulation. It's a public meeting. It's well within your discretion to allow members of the public to speak, even if it's not a public hearing, if it's a public meeting, it's always within the council's discretion. And I, I found most town councils, especially in rural town, always let the public speak. And in this case, we're an interested party, and we do have a conditionally issued license, and there's a stay on it right now. And I would say, I would think it would be much more appropriate for you to hear on the side of caution and hear us than not hear us. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I actually have a question for our solicitor. Is that, is that me? Okay. Um. There's obviously been some considerable amount of public testimony regarding our previous hearings, at least the ones I've been at. I'm obviously new as of January. I know there's been a significant history of this application, that is, Mr. Nicholas Izzy, JTD Incorporated. My question is, in order to establish certain facts that would be relevant and helpful to the council's consideration under the statute three dash five dash sixteen point one, whether or not the license had been abandoned, seems to me that there's a, a set of facts which may be obvious to all of us up here, having listened to certain testimony out of the hearings, and/or perhaps, as I have done, perused the history of this before I was on the council. But I'm just wondering, what do you think the best way of putting those, or getting those facts on the record is with regards to the fact that the applicant is here, and we have to make certain findings? I, I think that the most obvious way would be for the, again, given there's been prior public testimony earlier this year, in February or March, there was also a decision rendered by the DVR, which all of you have, have seen. It may be beneficial just to run through those, those facts, which, I don't want to put the cop before the horse, but at least many of those relevant facts are undisputed. And to get those on record, obviously, Mr. Hammond, if he has an issue with one of them, he can, he can tell the council why he has an issue. But if, Mr. Hammond, if you agree with that process, we can just lay out some facts, and given, I think they've already been, been part of the record. Thank you. If it, if it helps move the process along, I'm prepared to recite some facts and subject to clarification or questions, if the council's amenable to that. I would say initially, in April of 2016, well, first, I would say, Mr. Izzy is the owner of four to 10 Hope Furnace Road. It's a multi-unit property in Hope, that in April of 2016, that property, specifically 10 Hope Furnace Road, which was the subject premises for the Class A license that Mr. Izzy had at that time, was destroyed by fire. The premises thereafter became unavailable for use, and the retail business, the Class A retail business ceased to operate. I would say that facts in the record would establish from December of 2016, excuse me, from November of 2016 to November of 2024, and to my knowledge, to date, the retail business at 10 Hope Furnace Road has been closed. No Class A liquor license had been issued to the applicant for 10 Hope Furnace Road. And accordingly, the premises has remained unavailable for use, and the applicant had ceased to keep or sell alcoholic beverages at the subject premises from the time of the fire up and through today. In November of 2024, the town council sitting as the liquor licensing board did not renew Mr. Izzy's application for a liquor license at the subject premises, and that the premises remained unavailable for use, and that, at least as of November of 2024, Mr. Izzy had ceased keeping and selling alcohol beverages at that premises, and the license thus expired. In January of 2025, Mr. Izzy applied for a new Class A license at a new premises, identified as eight Hope Furnace Road. Obviously, he owns the entire property there, numbers four through 10, as I indicated. We're all familiar with the multi-use property. And his license was for, quote, retail sales liquor and groceries, close quote. The application was a new application. It was advertised as such. And at the time of that application, the previous premises of the Class A license, which is 10 Hope Furnace Road, remained unavailable for use. There was a public hearing in February of 2025 on the application. That is, the application that Mr. Izzy had put forward for eight Hope Furnace Road. At the same time of that application, there was another application by Chopmest Hill Liquors LLC, and Mr. Stephen Kitson, also seeking a Class A license. At that February 25th public hearing, Mr. Izzy had not, to my recollection, objected to the board considering the Chopmest Hill Liquors LLC application, nor am I aware of any effort by Mr. Izzy to seek an injunction stopping the town council as the liquor licensing board from hearing the Chopmest from hearing the Chopmest Hill Liquors LLC application. Even though the facts were that there were essentially two applications for a Class A liquor license, but only one license available at that time. At the February 25th hearing, Mr. Izzy indicated that the 10 Hope Furnace Road location remained unavailable for use, that he, I think it goes without saying, but I will say it, that he, he continued to neither keep nor sell beverages nor operate the general grocery store at that location. It had been closed since the fire, as well as some additional matters that Mr. Izzy had testified to. And that's why he was pursuing the new license at eight Hope Furnace Road. There was further discussion that the eight Hope Furnace Road location was currently occupied by another tenant to the Patuxet River Authority. And Mr. Izzy had indicated that the premise, the premises, should he be granted a liquor license, would either be shared with them, or he would evict the Patuxet River Authority if necessary. And so I, I think it's, it's fair to recognize that since 2016, 10 Hope Furnace Road had remained unavailable for use for the keeping or selling of alcoholic beverages. And that when this board granted a license to Chopmest Hill Liquors LLC, it gave rise to the DBR matter cited in the call of the meeting, DBR number two, five, LQ zero, zero, one. And that that, as has been discussed previously, resulted in a stay and a request or demand by the DBR hearing officer for this council sitting as the liquor licensing board to address the question under Island General Laws three dash five dash sixteen point one entitled revocation of abandoned Class A license. I, I think those are all the relevant facts that we need to recognize to determine whether or not Mr. Izzy has abandoned the Class A license that was for 10 Hope Furnace Road. So I, I think, I think that summarizes what we have to recognize in order to address this matter.
Mr. Hammond, do you want to be heard on, on those facts?
So, I mean, I'll be brief because based on the recitation of those alleged facts, I get the sense of where this is going to go. And there's no reason to waste our time because the appeals are de novo. So I take issue with the idea that there's any evidence in the record that he has ceased to keep inventory. The wine and liquors case makes it clear that there are two components to operating, selling and keeping. Mr. Izzy has maintained approximately 100 bottles of spirits that he keeps that are still good, that are not expired. So he's maintained an inventory. So you can't find that he ceased operating. Abandonment requires an affirmative action. You can't abandon something by accident. So he's come before you and he's talked to you about the different efforts to get the building back together. He's come before you and talked to you about the automatic stay that entered in his divorce that tied him up for two years. He's come to you and talked to you about what happened in December of 2023, when much of that progress was undone by a windstorm. So he's continued to work. He's continued to apply for the license every year. You've continued to vote on it every year until the last time around. So he's not abandoned it. Right now before you, you have a pending application for renewal that the DBR has found you failed to act on. So you didn't not renew it. May have been the, and I know there's different people here in some ways than before, but the DBR has found that that inaction on the October renewal does not operate as a denial. It operated as nothing. So you've had an application for renewal pending since October. He represented at that time, if he had gotten a license, he could have been done in five months. Maybe you believe him, maybe you don't. I highly doubt you think he's lying to you. Believe, I would imagine you believe he intends that to happen. But we'd be done. Additionally, he represented, I think, in one of the winter meetings that he would transfer it to eight Hope Furnace Road until he finished at 10. It's perfectly allowable by law. There are Superior Court decisions that have sanctioned the practice of transferring an application while renewal is pending. Happens a lot. It happens in DBR actions a lot because sometimes the, the appeal is stayed and they say, just transfer the license and move on. So you've had, you have now before you, before this hearing was scheduled, a transfer application tied to that renewal to move the license to eight Hope Furnace Road. Eight Hope Furnace Road needs a final fire inspection, paint and racks. You could approve the renewal. Obviously not at this hearing because it's not what's noticed. You could approve the renewal and you could give him 30 days to get open as a condition of it. You could find abandonment and give him 30 days to get the license, you know, I would say 30 days from your action on the transfer to get it open. So he's at the finish line at eight Hope Furnace. When he knows he's got the license, he can secure the last of his funding to finish the build out. And he's not taken any affirmative action to abandon it. So he doesn't meet the criteria of the statute. Can I sit here and tell you with a straight face that it's normal and common for a license not to be utilized in the traditional sense of the word since 2016? No. It's certainly unusual. But my argument from a legal perspective is that clock didn't, doesn't go all the way back to 2016. Under the 401 Nightlife decision, the, every time the council acts and renews, or a licensing board acts and renews, what happened in that year prior, if not grounds for non-renewal, can't be used two, three years later. 401 Nightlife LLC, who's my case against Cranston. Went on that issue twice with Cranston. So you get an application in October of 24th. It's not nine years of inaction. It's you consider it at that moment. And at that moment, he was five months away from completion. And at that moment, he was prepared to move it somewhere else. Since the hearing in January, he's evicted the Patuxet River Authority. So he's not sharing the premises anymore. So the council's going to do what you think is in the best interest of the town. I get it. I appreciate the fact that you've introduced a resolution to try to get another liquor license in the town. I'd indicated to your solicitor, I was happy to lend our voice to get that done. That way it doesn't become a zero sum game between the Kitsons and the Izzy's. Maybe everybody wins that way. But the reality is, what's before you now is not a person who's abandoned the license. It's a person who's had problems, yes, who's come up with a plan B that we're telling you can be, you have 30 days under the hearing before you to get that open, subject to the transfer. And obviously, we need you to act on the transfer. But the public policy behind these laws are that these Class A licenses are valuable. They're limited everywhere you go. Some places have more than the cap, which makes them valuable because they extinguish. The public policy behind them is to prevent a person from sitting on it for speculation to sell it. You don't want someone holding a Class A license because they're trying to sell it to Mr. Broschu for 500. But Mr. Craven is going to pay 750. That's what the public policy is about. Not a guy who's had a fire, not a person who's had a divorce, not a person who's continued to pursue getting his business back on track. He's not benefited in any way since 2018. And I think the council's been reasonable. I'm not here to tell you, you haven't been reasonable in the actions that you've taken. I think what makes it difficult is now at the finish line, at a place where he can get it done, that it happens now. So I understand you're going to do what you're going to do. I understand how we got here. But, you know, where I take issue is the idea that there's undisputed fact that he ceased to keep it. He's kept it. I take issue with the undisputed fact that he has abandoned it. In the legal sense of the word, it requires an affirmative action. You have no evidence of that. And so what I would urge you to do, if you feel compelled to act under the statute that you have today, is to afford that reasonable extension, not for a year, but for enough time for the council to act on the pending transfer application and renewal application that you have before you. And then from the approval of that, if you approve it, 30 days to get eight Hope Furnace open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I
Yes, a quick question.
The entire time since 2016, we've been talking about 10 Hope Furnace Road. When Mr. Izzy came to us, he came to us for eight Hope Furnace Road. Would he then have not abandoned his effort to have a license for 10 Hope Furnace Road?
No, because what I believe he represented was he would move it there temporarily. Because of the idea that nothing was happening, he would move it there temporarily with the intent to move it back to 10. And that would still be the intent.
Okay, another question. You stated that the license has value. And by having the license, it would permit him to get his final funding. He's had the license since 2016. What held up the funding?
The second round of casualty in 2023.
Well, he still had the license and, and, and your premise was is that the license was, the funding was tied to the license. He had the license. The, the wind blowing, the, the building over notwithstanding, he still had the license. Why doesn't he have the funding in place?
Created a new insurance issue. And that, and that weight, weight has value to a bank is not what you can do with the license. It's what makes the business plan work, right? So if he's going to get the final piece of his construction budget financed by the bank, because he's had a shortfall in insurance, he needs to know to the bank, am I building a liquor store? Or am I building something else? Because if he doesn't have the liquor store there, then he may construct something different at 10 Hope Furnace, move in a different direction, have a different set of financing and a different set of circumstances.
So, so might I understand he did not have his final set of funding in place when the roof was blown off the building?
It created a new problem.
No, I understand that. Ironically, Mr. Hammond, you're talking to a 46-year veteran of the insurance business. So I am well aware of what occurs. I've always had questions to, as to what took a year to settle the case in 2016, because that's never been my experience. The roof blowing off was not Mr. Izzy's issue. It was a responsibility of the general contractor or the contractor who's putting up the roof to make claim on his general liability policy and have that building, have that work taken care of. So in no situation was Mr. Izzy financially adverse or responsible for the damage that was done to his building due to the windstorm. That was on the part of the contractor and his insurance. So that shouldn't have affected his financing, or for that matter, his timing.
Well, my experience with the insurance industry is quite different than that because I don't find it to be a very reasonable industry to deal with.
Well, maybe you're talking about
Making your experience that has nothing to do with this particular case and applying, which is, you know, again, predetermined outcomes. I'm not going to convince you that you're right or you're wrong. Quite honestly, I'm going to go up on a decision if you take your prejudices and apply them here. So I've represented to you that he's had issues with financing, with additional losses, and no bank's going to lend until they know what's going to happen. And he can't represent to the bank that he has a liquor license at this point in time because of all the consternation that we have here.
When did he, when did he notify the bank that he no longer had a liquor license?
I don't know.
Okay, so then we don't know what his timeline was as far as when his financing became, I guess, suspended or in limbo because they weren't sure of his license.
And again, it's irrelevant to what's before you today because he's not abandoned his effort to do it. And he's not ceased his operation. So if you want to take action, that's against the statute. That's your prerogative to do so. I don't bother trying to convince the town council. It's all politics. I get it. Do what you gotta do.
Well, you know what? I, I don't, I don't care for that, quite frankly. I don't, I don't, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but this has nothing to do with politics.
Everything is politics.
No, it's not.
No.
It's everything.
No, we, we have bent over, but we have bent over.
I get what's going on. And maybe it's not you. Maybe it's not you. I've been in politics since I was 18 years old. That right there is a political agenda that you're trying to execute. So get it over with and execute it so I can go get a real hearing somewhere else, if that's how you want to play it. But
I'm, I'm asking
Sit here all night and listen to you talk about what you think happened from 42 years ago. It's all, you're already letting people who have no standing participate. If you want to non-renew the guy's license, go ahead and do it. It's a de novo hearing. I'll go someplace where I can get justice. Because clearly won't get it from you, sir.
Okay, so what I was going to say is you probably had problems with insurance companies when it comes to maybe a personal injury case or something like that.
What do you know about what insurance industries I have? I deal with property cases all the time. Got one of my own. It's going on 18 months.
You know what I find amazing lately in this world is everybody has, thinks they have the right to speak, but when I go to speak, you run me over.
Because I can't waste my time with nonsense. He's sending a lot of money to me to sit here.
That's enough. That's enough.
Can't take it to DBR in the first instance.
That's enough.
It's a waste of time.
Let, let her speak. I'm just trying to get one more, one more thing is, so did the contractor make Mr. Izzy whole when his roof was blown off?
I don't know. And it's not relevant to whether or not the license is abandoned? Okay, that's your opinion. You're wrong.
The building would have been, the building would have been done and we wouldn't be here. The building would have been fixed, finished and done and we wouldn't be here.
But that's not the standard for abandonment, which is an affirmative action to give it up. It's not an ad, it's not a criteria for ceasing operations, which are you selling? No. Are you keeping? Yes. That's all that matters. Not your personal experience in the industry of insurance, not what you think a general contractor should do. Focus on the simple issue, get it over with, and we can all go home.
I find your impatience and your arrogance that your time is more valuable than the people sitting here.
My client is spending his money to have me here.
Spending my time with, I'm not with a family because I have to, to somebody arrogant like you.
Get it on with it. Go ahead and non-renew the license. If this is your idea of a hearing, it's ridiculous and it's why it's a waste of time.
Me, sir. I just have a couple of questions.
Go ahead. Is there these Facebook things you post on Facebook? Is that what I'm going to get your questions from your friends?
Mr. Hammond.
Please. I look forward to them.
Mr. Hammond. Control your comments.
You have no business participating in it because you post on Facebook about what's going on here. So go ahead.
I have every right to participate on this. This has been here for several times. Now, I'm just wondering if the entity that Mr. Izzy is applying for or the abandonment is a valid entity in the Secretary of State's office.
Yes. Yes. What else?
Several times.
Yeah, I heard it. I've, I've listened to you on DBAs. I got it. Yes.
Okay, perfect. So that's great. So it is a valid entity. Now, the other thing is, is if he's got tangible tax, I mean, if he's got tangible property, has he been paying tangible tax on that property through the, the town constituent for whatever inventory he had?
Ask your tax assessor.
Well, I'm well.
Go ahead. And then you can post the results on Facebook when you're done. Anybody else got a gotcha? Mr. D'Agostino at least presents some kind of a fair analysis of it. But you have a preconceived notion. You have an agenda. You have posted your agenda on Facebook. And I have to sit here and he has to pay me to sit here to go through it. So I had semblance of a hope based on Mr. D'Agostino's rendition and his acknowledgement for different parts, at least his nodding of it, that maybe there was a glimmer of some kind of actual hearing. But after doing these license hearings in front of councils for 13 years, I should have known better to think it would be any different than what else I've been through.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kane, you want to say anything to this? Mr. Kane, you want to say anything to this?
So uh. John's Liquors, uh, there's never been a license, I don't think, in the state of Rhode Island that has been held in abeyance for as long as this one. So this council and prior councils have bent over backwards to accommodate Mr. Izzy on his timeframe. Whatever that was, his divorce, a windstorm, COVID, nine years, his timeframe, not your timeframe, and certainly not the timeframe set forth in state law. His time, you've been strung along for nine years. All right, so I just got online today and the the store burnt down in April of sixteen. That's an agreed upon fact. And the divorce was filed. All I have is the front page of the docket sheet. I have ten copies. So.
The divorce was, I'm going to get it as an exhibit because of the document of completeness. It's one page of seven I guess.
So all I did was highlight the. He's he's.
It's noted. It's noted.
The document of completeness, no, it's a, you can't, no, you can ask a moonlight. And you can't look at him, he's participating in the litigation, I guess, that's not unwise. He has a role to represent you.
It's up to you, has an administrator, has a board of licensing commission, whether to take this, anybody can get on. This appear uh the court docket base, it's a public record. It's one page of the docket and the only reason it's being introduced to show you that the divorce was commenced two years after the store burnt down. So we heard all about a divorce and how that closed the la, there was no divorce filed until. April fifth of two thousand and eighteen. And the divorce was closed on seven twenty three, two thousand twenty one.
So it's all then under a missing Izzy's time.
I'm going to recognize it. Go ahead, Mr. Kane.
Now, the statute that at hand. Three dash five dash sixteen point one talks about an abandonment or has ceased to operate under the license for ninety days or more. Then after hearing with due notice to the licensee, the local licensing authority shall cancel the license. Provided that the authority may grant a reasonable period of time not to exceed one year. To the licensee within to which to reestablish the business. It's totally discretionary. It says may grant, not shall. They really want you to cancel the license. That's what the state law says, but you may grant an extension. So you have all the discretion in the world as to whether to grant an extension. Now, Mr. Heeman got up and made the representation that he has kept a hundred bottles of spirits. The the case that he cited says the licensee. Has ceased to both keep and sell alcoholic beverages at the subject premises. I don't recall Mr. Izzy getting up and raising his right hand under oath and testifying that he kept a hundred bottles of spirits at the subject premises. I don't know how he could because it burnt down. So maybe he grabbed a hundred bottles, kept them in his basement somewhere, but it certainly does not meet the intent of this case whatsoever.
Yeah, but.
Last but not least, we've heard about insurance and this, that, and the next thing. There's one other thing I grabbed out of the superior file. I'm going to find my copy, was it? It was in order, incident to the case, the divorce case. On seven sixteen of two thousand and nineteen. And Mr. Izzy was ordered, the defendant has until June thirtieth, two nineteen to provide a complete list of the detailed expenses. That were paid from the over nine hundred thousand dollars received on the month. So we know as at least of seven sixteen, two nineteen, he received almost a million dollars from points of funding, presumably. To call the divorce. So let's just admit that. Mr. Heeman described to you what the public policy is behind the statutes, the abandonment statute. And it was discussed in the hearing officer's decision where she ordered you to hold the abandonment hearing. And it's footnote number six on page seven. And it says, if the liquor license abandoned or ceases to operate, and I would respectfully suggest you. That he unequivocally has ceased to operate and there's no competent evidence on the record that he kept booze at the location because he couldn't, it burnt down. So the footnote says, if the liquor license abandons or ceases to operate its store, it means the store is not open and is not selling liquor to patrons. The point behind the statute is to ensure that stores are open and operating for people to use. If the store is not operated to be patronized, the local authority shall cancel the class A license. The statute specifically targets class A license holders because of the statutory cap for class A licenses. This ensures that licenses are not held in abeyance for various reasons. Nine years, this has been going. Time to come to an end. You've been strung along, you and prior councils for nine years on his timeframe, not yours and not what the law requires. You have every right in the world and you should find that he has ceased to operate. You can find that he has abandoned and ceased to operate, but if you make a finding that he has ceased to operate. Cease to both keep and sell alcohol products at the subject premises, then you are well within your rights to uh find a license no longer in effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. President, I I have a question um for our solicitor, if I may. Um, why I, Mr. Heeman had referenced um. A a transfer. Um, and I I wasn't, I wasn't clear as to whether or not there was a transfer that was part of that DBR case. Can can you explain that if you will?
I would, I would defer to the clerk, but I believe sometime, um, Madam Clerk, was it last month? Uh, the town received a transfer application from Mr. Izzy to transfer the license from ten Hope Furnace to eight Hope Furnace. Was was it last month? I believe it was after the hearing.
It was after the hearing, but prior to the hearing, I believe the license said a new. License for a class A was not a transfer.
No, no, I believe, but did.
No, but prior to that.
So in the proceeding you had in February, yeah, okay. Um, both, and again, I think the council can lean whatever it wants and put whatever weight it does from from circumstances, okay? But um, you know, I I think i- in January. Uh, however it it arrived, but the town received two applications for the one license that was available at the time. I will, and that's subject to this, the proceedings for the DBR, but for the sake of conversation. Um, you know, so those two applications came in and it was very clear with Mr. Izzy and his counsel. He's represented by attorney Seth Perlmutter at the time. That license was for a new license at eight Hope Furnace. It was advertised a- as such. There was a certificate from the Department of Revenue that it was for a new license. Um, and those were the two licenses you heard in in February. Um, I believe it was after the DBR proceedings. That Mr. Izzy then filed with the clerk an application to transfer the license of ten Hope Furnace to eight Hope Furnace. Um, that again, I it 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 doesn't um. I I think they're doing that, you know, for for reasons they only have. Um, but it was clear i- in January that the application at a Hope Furnace was a was a new license. I think in in their minds, I I don't want to speculate what they're what they're doing, but um. You know, obviously there's no evidence before you. That ten Hope Furnace is available today or will soon be available. In fact, in February. Um, this you, the council was here and Mr. Uh Izzy and through his counsel, Mr. Perlmutter were testifying. Um, that uh, you know, ten Hope Furnace was uh, if it was to be available, it was, it was many months down the road, past the summer into the fall. Um, and but I think it's it's clear why uh. You know, uh, eight Hope Furnace was suddenly uh brought before you. Um. And uh, I, the recitation of of the law by Mr. Kane, you know, is correct. So the statute and the, you know, it was remanded by the hearing officer to to hold this abandonment hearing. Um, and um, if you find he ceased uh to operate. Or or store liquor, that is what the the decision from Judge Lanford said in two thousand twenty three, it says at the subject premises. And again, we we've all live in town, we drive by the property. Uh, you know, regularly um from two thousand sixteen and until now, obviously everyone knows it burnt down. That's not in in dispute. And um. And so you can take that uh into account and make a finding whether he he kept liquor there. Um, so whether that he kept it at his house or in his shed or or somewhere else. Uh, that obviously would not comport with the license. Um, so the council can take that fact into consideration and and whether to. Uh, grant uh any further extension of time uh to Mr. Izzy. For ten Hope Furnace Road, obviously you can take into account that he's had since two thousand sixteen. Uh, to bring the property uh. To reconstruct the property and have the property available. Um, and to date, there's, there's no evidence uh before you that even between. Uh, February and now that the that work has been done at the property or it somehow is available. I I think everyone's in agreement, the property is 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 not available, there hasn't been a CO issued. Um. And it's not available for use. So you could take those facts into consideration uh as they're largely undisputed.
Thank you. I I just wanted to be uh um clear, and I I think you have clarified it, that the question of or the issue of a transfer was not part of the DBR. Case.
That's correct.
That has that has sort of sent this thing back to us to decide.
That that's correct because the transfer, um, again, the proceedings in February, which were continued one month to March. Was before the board was two. Uh, applications, two new applications for the one available class A license. There was no transfer pending before the board in in February or or March.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, I'm I'm prepared to make a motion. Um, I would like to uh ensure if if the motion is seconded, that uh I am given an opportunity to to uh speak on the motion. But um, at this point in time, I'm prepared um to make a motion to find that the class A license for Mr. Izzy and JTD Incorporated at ten Hope Furnace Road. Has been abandoned because Mr. Izzy failed during eight years to make the premises available for use or otherwise reopen the retail business. For the reasons summarized this evening, uh, and that the license is revoked.
Motion's been made. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made seconded.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. I did, I said abandoned. I know at the end, but I said abandoned, yeah. That's why I wrote it down. Thank you. Um, I I just want to say that uh. I appreciate the advocacy of both Mr. Heeman and Mr. Kane. Um, I I know they're difficult. It's difficult to represent clients. Um, I also want to say that last evening I was in front of the uh. House uh committee testifying on behalf of the council in favor of resolution uh twenty five, I think it was zero seven. Um, requesting a third liquor license and um. I certainly would hope that uh. Uh, enabling legislation or that that amendment is is passed. But I also wanted to say that um. Uh, I I understand um. Why this issue has sort of lingered as long as it has? Because I think councils have tried to do the right thing. And I think Mr. Izzy has also tried to do the right thing. Um, circumstances being what they are. Uh, it's necessary for me and I'm new to the council. Um, uh, I I have to, I have to make this motion because I I don't think there's any other way to put a period on this, on this particular issue. Um, obviously prior councils did what they did, they have their reasons for that. Um, and I just want to say I, earlier in the year, I I had actually uh spoken with Mr. Izzy to try to assist him in uh getting some approvals uh from our building office. Which I understand did come, uh, I don't think all of them came, but um. You know, we're we're up here to do the difficult thing, so. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for allowing me to mention that.
Okay, is anybody else in the council that need the discussion? Okay, barring all other discussion, Will Klopik.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Parmley. Councilman Grandy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yor. Councilman Musa.
Aye.
Council Vice President D'Agostino. And Council President Collins.
Aye.
Okay, can I have a motion to uh close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made seconded in all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned. Motion made seconded in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, and he gets it all set, beg to adjourn.